So before I get started with the approval of the December invoices, we've got Rob Jones here who's our former chair and want to give him a resolution. So I'll take a moment here to read this from Georgetown Scott County Planning and Zoning Commission, Resolution Number 2019-01. It's the first one this year. Resolution related to appreciation of Rob Jones' service and leadership as member and chairman of the Georgetown Scott County Planning and Zoning Commission. Whereas upon the occasion of Rob Jones' rotation off the Georgetown Scott County Planning and Zoning Commission, it is essential that his fellow commission members express appreciation for his service and leadership. The community relies upon qualified concerned citizens to oversee vital local government services. Rob exemplifies the involved citizen in whom the community must be able to place its trust. Rob has served this community and planning and zoning well as commissioner, member since March of 2011, as vice chair from March of 2013 to March of 2015, and as chair from March 15 through the end of the year. He participated whenever needed, provided serious, well-considered questions, suggestions, opinions, and leadership. His presence on the commission strengthened the organization and the community it serves. His fellow commission members, on behalf of planning and zoning staff and the community they serve, acknowledge and by this resolution formally enter upon their permanent record their gratitude to Rob Jones for his active service and support as commission member and chair, and further extends his best wishes for his future endeavors. Upon motion by Mark Solsky and seconded by Mr. Smith, the foregoing resolution came before the Georgetown Scott County Planning and Zoning Commission at its regular meeting January 10, 2019.
You read too far.
What do you mean I read too far? And upon due consideration was adopted by unanimous vote. That must have happened before we sat down. So, Rob would you come on up and...
(applause)
Joe, do you want to do a picture? You want all coming around?
Yeah. Thank you, Rob.
All right, Joe. Thank you.
Can y'all come around front?
Yeah. I'll say Kayla, you might want to get in that picture.
You want to come around front?
I've been a member twenty years before you.
Yeah.
I'm pretty big for you.
Are you all ready?
Yes.
I just... Did it?
Yep, got it.
This is where I'm going to play off. Thank you guys, trusting me being chairman. Appreciate all y'all's help, Charlie. You guys helped me a lot. Everybody listening, Charlie, you'll learn quite a bit. Listen to these guys out here too. Like Mr. Lanfer, thank you very much. You've taught me a lot over the years. I really appreciate your wisdom always being here. Well, thank you. I really appreciate it. And I really appreciate our staff. Without them, this commission really is kind of weak because they got us and everything we do. So I watched all of them grow and come along, so I really appreciate our staff. I always appreciate the staff. Glad to see them. Even though I'm off this board and not gone, I'll still be in there. I've already been in Jones here for the past week and a half. You'll be seeing me, all right? Take a look outside. Oh, thank you much. I appreciate it. We're going to need it downstairs now, that's for sure. We'll be back. Good to see you. Thank you. That's a lot. Thanks, sir.
Hey, oh man, I'm going south. That's why we did you first. I was going to torture you and save you to the end. They've been here a while. Thanks, Rob. Okay, on to business. Approval of December invoices. So take a moment if you haven't already, and I need a motion.
I would move approval of the December invoices.
So motion by Mr. Smith.
A second.
And second by Mrs. Mizell. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Approval of December 13, 2018 minutes. So take a moment if you haven't already and read those, and I'll need a motion on that.
I need a motion to approve them.
Motion by Ms. Mizell.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mifflin. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Good. Approval of January agenda. I don't think we have any changes, no withdrawals or anything, so I need a motion to approve the January agenda.
So moved.
So by Mr. Wiseman.
A second.
And seconded by Mr. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Good. Approval of January agenda. I don't think we have any changes, no withdrawals or anything, so I need a motion to approve the January agenda.
So moved.
So by Mr. Wiseman.
A second.
And seconded by Mr. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Good. Approval of January agenda. I don't think we have any changes, no withdrawals or anything, so I need a motion to approve the January agenda.
So moved.
So by Mr. Wiseman.
A second.
And seconded by Mr. Smith. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, passes. Items for postponement withdrawal, I just said we don't have any. Consent agenda. We do have two eligible, so I'll go and I'll start. PDP 2018-62 Sleep-In Main Stay Suites Preliminary Development Plan to construct a 75-room hotel located at 407 Cherry Blossom. Anybody here opposed to it, or I guess even has questions about it? So that would be, I guess we do each of them separately, Charlie?
That's probably better for the record.
So I'd need a motion then for consent on, or unless we do want to hear it.
No, I would move that we approve PDP 2018-62 Sleep-In Main Stay Suites by consent.
Okay, we've got a motion made by Mr. Smith.
A second.
And a second made by Mrs. Mizell. Okay, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, passes as consent. And if, who's here on behalf of the sleep-in? You need to come up and sign with Charlie. Yes, yes. And oh, for the record, I should say, we've got, gosh, we've got several absentees. Byron Moran, Commissioner Moran is not here, and of course, Rob Jones is off, and Jeff Caldwell is not here as of yet. So one, two, three, and so we still have a quorum. So, Mifflin, Stone, Smith, Mizell, pass that one. Oh, you know what? I think I'll hold that here. All right, second, next on the agenda is FSP 2018-63 Alexander Property Final Subdivision plat to create 1 5.13 acre tract leaving a 39.89 acre remainder tract located at 383 Rogers Gap Road. Anybody here opposed to this application? Anybody want to hear this application? So we have another consent-eligible application, need a motion.
I make a motion.
So Mrs. Mizell makes the motion.
Second.
And Mr. Mifflin seconds. Get a little quicker on this. Okay, so all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, so that is approved as a consent. So yes, 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 yes. All right, moving on to other business, the Tri-Village Storage. I know on Monday we talked about having a continued meeting today, to continue the meeting till today. Under advice and talking to Charlie a little bit, my understanding is there's changes to the plans that are being presented tonight, or want to be presented tonight, and also some additional proposed changes. And then with the cemetery, my understanding is there may be a sonar survey being done here in the future, probably sooner than later.
Monday.
Monday. So my thought was to probably continue this on till either next month. I can use the word postpone or continue, but that's my thoughts. Because we have a lot of information that we don't have or don't know. I heard there, my understanding, there may possibly be a cemetery is what I heard, is it a Heritage Foundation? Attorney Sims?
Heritage Foundation.
You, please come up, I'm sorry. Come up to my, oh, by the way, swear everybody in, Charlie, I'm sorry.
Well, especially Doc. We can't let him get by.
Yeah.
Anyone who may be speaking or signing to speak tonight, if you would, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear a firm statement to make tonight, give proof to the best of your information and belief? Thank you, all.
So we'll try to make this real quick. My feelings and thoughts were this does need to be continued and postponed because there's still a lot of variables. Attorney Sims?
Well, I stood up to talk about the cemetery, but I'll address that too.
Sure.
If the, it's my understanding from review of the tape from the last meeting is that the board continued this meeting from the December meeting for the consideration of some issues. We had our work session the other day and did not come to, I think, any conclusions. I think the applicant's position remains the same, is that we have approval from a November 2017 meeting with a condition that required some signatures from off-site parties who share location on a private access road. In all other manners, we satisfied the requirements of the commission in terms of notice, in terms of our plan, meeting all the requirements, all the setback requirements. All those things were addressed and considered, addressed and ruled upon in the November 2017 meeting. We came back in December because we had been unsuccessful in the, our efforts with our neighbors to get permission on the use of the road. And through, and then through some efforts, we made some changes to the plan, to our plan, as it related to the concerns that staff had when they initially placed the conditions for signatures of permission from our neighbors on the property. It is, the, we addressed those issues. We further refined the entrance to where it was a more defined entrance. We stacked the parking so there was no more backing out into the access road. We moved the entrance gate back so there didn't have to be stacking in the event somebody had a large trailer and they were waiting access to get in. So we removed what we felt were the staff's expressed safety concerns as it related to the use of the access road. I had some considerable issue with the vesting of, the granting of the approval of a project, essentially, when you turned over the, our moving forward with our project to the permission of our neighbors and actually turns out to be business competitors of ours, some of these, some of the neighbors. We have, you've essentially abrogated your authority to third parties, and I have located a 1940's Kentucky Court of Appeals decision that would seem to certainly place that as a serious concern, and that the obligation for approval of projects rests with the boards. In this particular case, it was a, it was a city's interpretation of building codes, and this particular code granted to some third parties the right to control this decision, and the courts found that to be inappropriate, along with some other matters relating to the lack of standards and regulations in the case. But in, moving forward, I think the, our, my client feels like they have satisfied all the conditions, and then they came back and said, with relationship to the condition related to getting permission from our neighbors/competitors for approval to go forward, we've satisfied the safety concerns. We now have a more clearly defined entrance. We have a, we've taken care of the parking so that that's not a safety concern, and we would sought the removal of that condition. So I, it's my opinion that that's all we were here about tonight, and it appears to me on the record, that's all we should be about here tonight, is whether or not we can have that condition removed. We're prepared to discuss that. We want to go forward. Along the way, the problems that our neighbors have come up with, and were decided to us about not signing off on the approval of the road, are not related to the road. They're related to matters that have already been decided by this board. They want to use the opportunity, when we came in to seek a removal of a condition, to revisit all the issues. And I don't think that's appropriate. I think those matters have already been ruled upon, and so, but in a spirit of compromise, we've, we've looked at some ways that we could try to be good neighbors with the folks around us and make some concessions that they wanted to see. But it's my belief that that should be something that you all grant the authority on, that we work out, then we make those changes on the final plan when we bring it in to staff for development, and they approve it. I don't think anymore that we should give the third parties the approval to approve our project, and that's essentially what's gone on here.
So here's, Attorney Sims, here's where I think I'm at, is it's unfortunate that when the plan was approved, it was approved with the conditions and agreed upon by the applicant that those conditions were going to be met. Condition seven being the one that we're having an issue with, which is the maintenance agreement being signed by the adjoining neighbors. At the time of approval, that was accepted by the applicant. So at this point, I still feel like, instead of wasting everybody's time, there's quite a few things that need to be hashed out. Whether it's seven, and you all get together and meet and get it hashed out, the cemetery and other things, I really don't think we need to waste any more time tonight, and it needs to be continued to next meeting. And I probably need a motion to, or, I can make that, I'll make a motion to continue to next meeting. I need a second. Unless you want to discuss it. I mean, if you want...
From the applicant's standpoint, we would like, we would like the matter to go ahead and be heard. If you decide that we need to take more time to look at it, that's certainly the commission's prerogative, but we feel like we've worked diligently for 13 months to get this matter to a place where we can start to work. We have everything in place, we're ready to go, and we're, we can't move forward because our competitors don't want us to be there. And that they can paint that pig any way they want to, but that's what's going on.
I'll defer to my attorney.
Yeah, if I might address that. I mean, I understand the point about your competitors, that certainly is a potential point. The problem is, if that were the only issue we had, then we might need to discuss that. As it is, number one, I don't think it's a problem in that earlier case that a condition said you've got to get permission from the other folks that own this private easement. That's not a situation that they've had at the state court level. That's not something we ordinarily do, but where it's a private easement, I mean, you've got to be a part of that thing, period. When you're about to block it, which is what the original plan was going to do, you need to have that approval. That's not us abdicating our responsibilities. What I also see, though, is additional issues have come up since that was raised, and I don't think it is at all responsible for us to leave those untouched. If we approve the removal of condition seven tonight, then you've got a final plan and you can take off. There's no way, you need to take off with all these issues outstanding. Certainly, the cemetery, which we've approved, a cemetery, having been there, we've acknowledged it before, for us now to let you proceed with a plan where it's not concluded, when we know you're going to be doing a sonar or some sort of investigation on Monday where it's at least probable perhaps that the historic commission in Frankfort's got some plans that show it, I don't know. At least from my vantage point, it is utterly irresponsible for us to proceed tonight and get to a final plan, removing the one other condition, when we have serious questions about the zero lot lines and the imposition that poses on neighbors. Not that they can approve or disapprove your plan, but I invite you, go out and look at any ordinance you want to look at and see who puts that kind of burden on neighboring properties. It isn't done. I mean, I've spent hours, it's not done. So my advice to the board is tonight, no, sir, I agree with the chair. We do not need to take part action tonight. We need to get these questions answered, and condition number seven is but one of them, and I think they all need to be answered. And again, as I understand, there are some changes even in the works right now. We don't need to be taking action while all that's in the works.
Mr. Perkins, in all due respect, the, what other jurisdictions ordinance may read is not controlling here. Our ordinance allows zero lot lines. There was, and it's not a new issue, it was before this board when they voted on it. The staff report clearly indicates that. The staff report clearly indicates that there were zero lot lines, and the setbacks were appropriate for this application. Those were all matters that were, so it's not a new matter, it's revisiting an old matter that was evidently was okay when the vote was taken.
Well, actually, it's evidently not, and I'll sit right now and apologize because I was sitting here and I didn't catch it, but I've caught it since. So no, we need, in our responsibilities, we need to review that, and we need to make sure there's nothing we can do to correct any mistakes that there might be. But regardless, we don't need to be taking this thing one piece at a time. We need to resolve it, so you know what you've got, staff knows what we've got, other property owners know what they've got, and we don't need to do that one part at a time, we need to do it all at once. And it should be doable by next month.
Should we, should, can we, do we need to have any deadlines set for whatever needs to take place between now and next month?
Well, as, well, I don't know about deadlines, but if you all have proposed changes to make to the plan, obviously you need to get that done, you need to get it disseminated, you need to get it reviewed, and so on. As far as the testing goes, they need to get the test done, they need to get the results back. And, and again, in all candor, I don't know what my position's going to ultimately be because right now I just think there's a huge amount to be corrected, and what you're proposing may not have anything to do with it. But regardless, until we have it all in one package, again, I recommend if the chair's correct, we cannot do that tonight. Hopefully it's done in a timely fashion so that we've got advanced time for everybody to see it, review it, know what we've got, and then next time we come in here, we take action once, and everybody's on their way.
Mr. Sims, I agree with you that a third party does not have the responsibility of deciding, you know, your proposal. But with that said, like Mr. Perkins said, and Mr. Solsky, there's too many other things going on other than just getting their permission, okay? I don't think that's the deciding issue. And so with that said, I will second that motion of Mr. Swolski's to postpone this.
So we've got a motion by Mr. Solsky and a second by Mr. Mifflin to continue/postpone this till the next meeting. All in favor?
Is there any discussion on this one? Do we need to set some conditions, what needs to be done between now and...
I think so. I mean, the...
Charlie, do we want to go through the conditions?
Well, we need to know.
The thing, well, for example...
What needs to be done.
I think our discussion just now exposed pretty much what needs to happen before next month. Number one, we can't dictate what kind of modifications they may be proposing. I understand they've discussed them with maybe just staff, I don't know. They know what those are, they need to complete those, and they need to get them to where they can be reviewed by whoever needs to review them. As far as condition number seven, if staff has seen enough on that to be able to make a recommendation up or down about removing condition seven, then you need to do nothing more on that one. As far as the test goes, as I said before, they need to get the results as quickly as possible and get those to staff so that we've got that information. If there's anything else, then, I mean, that's their prerogative to present whatever it takes to convince the commission to do what they feel is appropriate. As I pointed out, I may be a total jerk to deal with throughout anyway, because I think we've got a major matter that needs to be resolved, and I'm a bit at a loss as to just how that's to be done under the current situation. So I can't tell you. Well, actually, I have told Doc what that's going to take, but that may not be acceptable. So I mean, they've just simply got to present the best case they've got, and we will do then the best that the commission's got.
So we've got a motion and a second. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, just...
Yes, sir. Come on.
Just to let you know, we brought the version of our plan that we would discuss in the future, the only soft item on it is what happens after the sonar people from that. We have, depending, if there's nothing there, you know...
Well, I heard there were plans brought in just as recent as yesterday, but I heard there were some modifications even as late as today.
Well, we're...
So I don't have any, I don't have these plans, and I don't think any of the other...
They're not, they, once again, it was not, it was not, we were, we were proposing these as issues that we would take up with our, the adjoining owners, and try to put together and submit them as minor changes for staff approval when we're done. They, they, they involved some minor concessions on the sideline, not minor to us, because that cost my client a lot of money tonight. But, and then the other one was... But, and then the other one was about the, about the location of the cemetery. If the sonar shows nothing's there, then we'll, we'll be removing the, what we've, we've been told is the site of the cemetery. If the cemetery is there, then they have a plan about what they're going to do, we'll have to make arrangements for it. It will either involve removal of bodies or building around it. So those two, those two items, I think, since zero lot line is available in this zone, in these competing zones, if we make concessions on the zero lot line and give you some, I think that's a minor change that staff could consider. So if you want to, if, I guess now in the vein of giving my client one final chance at moving forward tonight, we can look at what we have and it might have some personal tweaks depending upon where the cemetery is.
Charlie, would we, if we were to consider a decision tonight, and this is just hearsay, I mean, could we technically vote this thing down if you wanted, if the applicant wanted to force us or kind of force our hand to shoot? Because I mean, you've got condition number seven that has not been...
Addressed.
Addressed.
We would have approval with condition number seven still in place.
Well, to me, I'm thinking we could turn this thing down totally tonight and be done with it and then you've got to come back to the drawing board and I don't think you want that.
We have approval with number seven.
But seven's not been fulfilled.
We haven't submitted a final plan yet.
And if that's the case, and they could certainly insist upon that, then your jerk of an attorney would recommend total denial because I think the plan itself is insufficient because of its side effects.
Do you want to take the...
You can take your choice either way and we can go with it tonight and I'm glad they not come back next month and have to be...
If you want to roll your dice, we can discuss a little further and there's that chance it may be denied. Or do you want to talk to the adjoining neighbors, our staff and possibly work a few more details out that need to be worked out? That's the way I look at it.
Mr. Chairman, it seems to me like the action we're headed toward amounts to rescinding our December 17 decision.
Correct.
Now, do we have the legal authority to go back like that and rescind our decision?
Charlie?
There's not a nice set out stock procedure for doing that. We would be taking some risk in doing that, you might say, of an appeal being found in our, to our disfavor. I think we've got such significant issues involved, I think that needs to be addressed because if not, we also have the risk then of being found to have posed conditions on neighboring properties, which we have no right to do. To take it to an extreme, you might say we've, to a degree, condemned neighboring properties by allowing these folks to encroach all the way to the property line, regardless of what the ordinance says or the, you know, the table says about setbacks. Because we didn't, if you allow that, that's fine, but then there's got to be safeguards, there's got to be reciprocal obligations, which is why those things are done in every ordinance I've looked at within a development, not up against adjacent developments. I think that's just, that was a substandard or an omission in our ordinance that didn't come to our attention because that's not what our ordinance said and I think it should have.
Chairman, it tells you, for the record, I don't agree with Charlie's analysis of what the zero lot line means. I don't think it amounts to a taking. With that said, I do, after a conference with my client, I guess we will reconvene here in February?
It's second Thursday? I don't know what that is.
Correct.
The fourteenth.
No, no issues with, we'll do all our filings, get everything to staff, work with staff and neighbors in advance of that meeting.
And just if I might throw one thing out, Doc has asked a question a couple of times if this wouldn't ordinarily be a matter that would simply go to staff for adjustments and whatnot. And while I'm not usually involved in that decision, I might suggest that if in fact that's something that appears to be semi-reasonable, they can always check with the executive committee and let the executive committee take a look at that and say yea or nay on it. And if they say yea, do it and if they say no, it needs to come back to the full commission, then it needs to come back.
Thank you, Attorney Sims. Real quick, if you would like to speak, Mr. Johnson, and we do have a motion and a second, so...
I got it. I guess just a procedural question. I've never seen this plan. One of the reasons that we're here is because I'd never seen the plan. And so I went to the planning commission and talked to Joe and Ben this week and said, can I see the plan? And they said, no. And I said, why not? They said, well, it hasn't been formally submitted. So I can't even debate with you guys right now. They're telling you that they've solved all the parking issues with the access road. I need to tell if they have or not. I was eating lunch at Fava's today and Doc was there and we always sit around the big ground table and eat lunch and he shows me a drawing, but this is the first time I've seen it, it's about this big, I guess eight and a half by 11, might have been 11 by 17. But I was in a hurry and so I got about maybe two minutes or maybe a minute to look at the drawing. I'd really like to have the opportunity. So if y'all are going to pass it, is it going to be something where they submit it the day before or can we look at it and have an opportunity to come in here and say, hey, this is fine with us or wait a minute, these are causing...
Joe, when you get the plans, will you, would you be so kind to call Mr. Johnson, let him know that you did receive the submitted plans?
Yeah.
Well, you two can discuss that after we get out of here. Yes, sir.
I think we need to see the plans before submitting deadline, which is...
I, I, which is anticipating...
What's the middle deadline?
It's two weeks prior.
So probably the first of February, roughly.
That's it, that's all.
No, Bruce, I'm not hearing. Come on up, Mr. Langford.
The issue that I just made the effort to meet with them at lunch today is incorrect. I've been, Mr. Langford will, I'm sure will acknowledge that I've called him for a couple days to try to get together, he was having his people, parts of his people, one of my people.
That, that's why we postponed it tonight.
That's precisely...
Mr. Langford, go ahead.
Now, in the merits, I just wanted to talk procedurally. Charlie, this is, I'm hearing an amended application.
We haven't seen it yet, Bruce, we don't know what it is.
We don't know.
If they're going to file a new plan, they should amend their application, send the plan out with the notice to all the adjacent property. There are some 13 property owners who received notice, are supposed to receive notice, 13 of them. They should, approximately 13, they should be notified in the usual manner for amended of a development plan so that everybody will have notice of what's going on, when the meeting is going to be and what it's about.
Mr. Langford, since Monday, I have looked through our procedural manual and I don't find that in there anywhere. So I, I just, if, if you know where it is, I would love to see it.
What is it you don't find?
That, that this is an amended version and then it has to, you've got to start all over again.
Well, do you find that they can change and change and change and change?
It, it, it talks about making changes, yes.
I could probably clarify that a little bit. It's in our subdivision development regulations and the way it typically works, if there's a change to an approved preliminary development plan or plat, they submit it to our office and we make the determination as to whether it's major or minor in that definition of major minor amendments in our subregs. There's also a section in the administrative, I looked through that, rules and regulations, it's the last, last page. It mentions it for plats, it doesn't mention it for plans.
Okay.
But it does mention that a major change, if there's determined to be a major change, it follows the same procedure as a preliminary. So it would essentially be a new preliminary submittal.
Okay.
If it's major. So I would suggest maybe they submit the plan a week prior to the re, to the resubmittal deadline. So that's two weeks prior to the next meeting's the 21st. If they submit it by the 14th, we can look at it and determine if the changes have been major or minor. If they don't like my decision, they could appeal to the executive board and then we can determine at that point whether it's minor, minor in nature and can be approved by staff or whether it have to come back to the full commission.
Actually, next meeting is the February 14th, not the 21st, so...
Okay, means the 14th, so 14 days prior is the 30th.
Roughly the end of the month or first.
31st, you come back in a week from the 31st.
Yeah, they submit it by the, whatever it is, 24th.
All right. So we have a motion, we have a second on the floor. All in favor to continue this?
Well, I'd like a comment here.
Okay. Got one more comment.
In effect, rescinding our December, or November...
No.
We're saying we're taking back our approval.
No.
We're starting over.
No. This is just to continue...
We just want more information.
More information. We don't have enough...
There's been no motion, second vote to do anything like that.
So this is, this motion and second is to continue this at next month's meeting.
To continue means we are going back on our original decision, then starting over to see whether we want to approve it the way it is now.
I don't think so.
We've already approved something and we're saying, okay, we're not going to go with that.
But the current approval hasn't met all the conditions of approval, so that's why unfortunately they're back here. It's not really an application, it's a continuance of probably the approval, seeing that they haven't met all the conditions of approval.
Well, actually, at this point, the only thing that's being continued is the removal of condition seven.
Yeah.
Because it hasn't been satisfied and I believe it's now moot. So that's all that's actually pending. Now, we happen to know that they're going to file some additional suggested changes to try to resolve some of the other issues as well as to document that number seven is now moot. But that's all that's on the table before us, that's all that's being continued to next month.
Okay, now I have another question. The issue seems to be that when it was approved, different plans were sent out to different people. Some had a zero lot line and some didn't and that sort of thing. Now, who was it, Joe, that did not send the right thing to the right people?
Well, I don't, it would have been the applicant. The applicant does all the mailings. Whether they send a map with their notice or not, we can't determine. I mean, there's no way for us to know because they don't, we don't require them to send a plan out with their notification. We just require them to send a letter with a map of the notification circle and a list of the people being notified and then send...
How do we be assured that this next time it will be sent out correctly?
And will it be a requirement to be sent out again to the adjoining neighbors?
Well, that comes down to that major and minor change. If I might, because I'm going to lose my train here. Thank you for the question because that prompts me to get back to one I was planning to ask a minute ago and it left me. I understood that someone still had a copy of the notice that they got way back when and they need to put that with an affidavit saying that that's what it is and that's what you received and circumstances and get that to staff because that's something that this board would need to take a look at.
Because I think that was Mr. Anderson had a copy of a different...
I'm going to promise a copy of it.
Well, and that's just it. You all need a copy of it, the record needs a copy of it. So if such a thing does exist, if it can be located, then that with an affidavit that that's what it is and then needs to get into the record.
Did you hear that, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, sir, I got you.
Okay. All right. So we've got a motion and a second by Mr. Mifflin. All in favor of continuing this till next month? Say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. And the only other thing I've got...
Frank, opposed.
Oh, you opposed? Thank you, sir. I'll make that note. The only other thing I've got there is the update of previously approved. Joe, do you want to go over that or no, previously?
We don't have any updates.
Okay, that's, all right. So anything, nothing else for the good of this board? We'll make a motion to adjourn...
Just bring the hammer down.